We're starting to figure out why we're in trouble.
You can go ahead and call me. Or you can stand for pledge of allegiance.
It's all on the same evening.
Pledge of allegiance, it's black and white.
That is safe to America. To the common people, for justice, one nation, a total and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the executive session in the regular meeting?
Yes.
Any additions or corrections? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12th.
June 12th.
June 12th, yeah. Um, we're reading the executive session minutes.
Kathy made a motion to approve both the regular and the special, or I'm sorry, the executive session. Is there a second? Surely a second. It's all in favor? Opposed? Approval of the payroll was presented. Any addition or any questions for Gina on the claims or payroll?
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims in the payroll.
Brooke made a motion to approve the claims in the payroll. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconded. All in favor? Oppose motion here. Anything on White Nation Project, Brooke?
Um, nothing yet. I think we're still waiting on that contract for the Sixth Street lot. And then we just had the sidewalks update that everybody got.
Can you share?
Sidewalks update. I think that they're going to have to rip them back out again and redo them because of the problems with them. And I believe that's going to be on the contractors' expense because they have to stand by their work. So that should be in the near future, being ripped out to be redone again.
Do you give a timeline?
I read it as pretty soon, like, but I can try. I'll try back next meeting and get back to you. But I took it as like, soon.
Do you know if they're able to make any headway with the county on that approach?
I haven't heard anything on that approach in a long time.
Okay.
What sidewalk do you talk about?
Oh, the one, the sidewalk to school project that goes up. They like started, have you looked at them? They started settling. Yeah. So that's why they're still had caution tape and been blocked off. And the railing has never been put up because they're not, they're not finished. They're not settled.
Uh, first up is the Brookville Volunteer Fire Department is requesting use of the Shilling Center for Training on November 17th. This is for the IBM A Training, Indiana Volunteer Firefighters Association. The venue is available for use. I'm assuming that they're requesting for donated use of the state.
I mean, as long as it's available, I wouldn't see the issue of donating it. So I would make the motion to approve donating the Shilling Center to the Brookville Volunteer Fire Department on that date.
Brooke made a motion to approve the request. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sure. Kathy seconds. All in favor? Oppose motion here. All right. White Water Valley Walkers, ten K walk.
Yeah, I'm Danny Fredson. I'm here representing them. I'm the president and have been for the 10 years we've been in existence. It's been, I think, six or seven years since we walked in Brookville. And I have a map of what we proposed for a close to five K and a 10 K. That's roughly a three mile, one to six mile walkers' choice walk in Brookville. Date is October the 24th. If you want, here's a copy of our brochure. White Water Valley Walkers is connected to the White Water canal trail principally in Matamora, but incorporated here. And it's a walk-on club that encourages walks. So there's 10 clubs in Indiana. We hold two walks a year. One always in Matamora on the trails up there, the other one moves around. So we've done Brookville before. The question I had in was where did you say the sidewalks are kind of being changed? Because I'm depending on the one going up to the elementary school, as the people would walk on it. Is that the one that is, you're going to rip it out?
I'm not, but the contractors are, yes.
Huh? Somebody else is going to have to?
Yes, I just don't know the timeline.
I don't think, I think right now they're cautioned off, aren't they?
Say it's, yeah, even if it's not, it's wrote off right now.
Yeah, they're not able to be walked on currently either.
We don't like to walk on highways. So the sidewalk is one of the things that we really are looking for. I guess I might not have the habit for this walk, but it's kind of impending to go up to the dam outlet, let the people see a little bit of up to the dam when we're there. How would, I guess I'd just follow in your notes or stay in touch with you to see when the work's going to be done.
Right. Could you have a backup?
When is the walk?
I think so. I think the very first time we walked in Brookville, we walked up and down Main Street, one side of the sidewalk, the other side of the sidewalk. And I'll go back to that old plan if we have to do that. I think we walked down the DuPont's Landing, which I was not going to do this time. You know, shorten and keep it on sidewalks in a little better area. But I appreciate you letting me know and so forth like that. I mean, I think I can do it okay, but you know, I mean, if I say it's under construction, we're only going to do an eight K walk instead of 10, I think I get by with that. I'll check with our state president.
I can show you right here in the mapboard.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's somewhere.
So from, basically from here?
Right.
All the way up along 101?
Yeah.
And then it kicks up Oxford Pike here.
Right.
So the part that's in question is right along here on Fairfield Avenue.
All right. Yeah, it's a rare use that you got that constructed. It makes this walk easier for us and on sidewalks that are nicely out of track. All right, I'll stay in touch with it. Any questions about what we do? We're registering people to start at nine. We don't let them start after one. We mark with signs, go around and take all the staples out, all the signs down after three o'clock that they have been. I've normally stopped and given a copy of this to the police department. Anything else that you've got in terms of instructions for us or warnings or questions?
I did want to ask about the popper shelter. It is available, but you said you are going to pay the rental fee? Or were you going to ask for donated use?
We can always use charity, but if you charge us, off ahead.
Now would be the time to ask for your organization because they would be the ones approving it.
Okay. Up to board?
It's the popper shelter and it is, uh, wait, I think I repeat twice.
Is this for the Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on Saturday morning.
You may have a little bit of people around there who are decorating trees for whatever land.
Already in October?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's the 22nd. The paper's the 22nd. I know he said the 24th, but it's the 22nd. That's okay. It's okay.
There shouldn't be too many warnings. It is the best.
No, and I was going to suggest that note that that's nicely decorated for Christmas all around. That's giving me a very nice gift.
I don't have an issue, especially with the sidewalk situation hindering the doing.
We're already in the beginning. Anything change in your plan with the sidewalk?
If it is available.
I would make a motion to donate the popper shelter to the White Water Valley Walkers.
So there's a motion to donate the, um, use of the popper shelter. And a second. All in favor? Opposed?
You're no good.
No.
No.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Magic. Main Street Transformation Strategies Workshop, Gage.
So I stand here?
Yeah. You can turn on your microphone. If you press that button, it might be, yeah, there you go.
Listen?
Yep.
All right. So I noticed that somewhere I'm some of the, that I was presenting also on funds. I don't really have anything on funds here for you guys. I do have some data that we collected from Indiana, some other municipalities around the state of Indiana, and how they support their Main Street. So any consideration you guys might give us, I'd be greatly appreciated. And so pretty early in the exact, no major time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got extra things.
So what we're really here for today is just to give you guys an update on all things Main Street Brookville, at least what I know. As you may know, that Brian, uh, is our president, is on vacation right now. And the president's gone. And I'm going to ask the president to step in. So that is what I'm here. So we have some other package for you. And what I'm going to be going over is just the transformative workshop that Main Street America put on here in Brookville. For us, it was a two-day event that happened in late August and so essentially in late August, like I said, and then also in September, we had another transformative shop that we did. I was not able to attend the transformative workshop, unfortunately. I know that there was good turnout from representatives here in town, leaders, sisters and the like. So that was great. I heard it really good. I was able to attend the second one, which was more in-depth look at the United Work Plan for 2023 and how we put that together. So that was really, really interesting. So yeah, like I said, the first, the first one, the transformational strategies workshop went over kind of the Main Street approach and bringing that Main Street approach to Main Street Brookville. Right now, Main Street America is heavily emphasizing revitalization and development and what that looks like downtown. We all know that if a municipality or the town has really booming downtown, that that just spreads out. It's kind of like at the center. So that's kind of what they went over with for us. And they gave us some really cool transformative strategy, strategies to look at, how we can improve Brookville, Main Street, and just Brookville as a whole. Which then segues perfectly into our second workshop, which I mentioned, my Oprah, our work plan. Oprah has done a really cool thing, a really good job, in my opinion, of revamping the work plan. In the past, the work plans were good, but the new ones that they have now are extremely actionable, which is really, really cool. So the way it kind of works is, say there's something in our transformative foreign strategy that we want to focus on. So you take that and you put it as a goal and then you write down the, we're going to be writing down the goals or the steps to take to reach that goal. So it's like super actionable. It's super easy to measure where we're at when we're standing as opposed to just having the area, as I said, we're going to do something. It doesn't have, you know, a bunch of actionable steps. So we are extremely excited about that. We are going to be getting started on our work plan. I believe we've already started on it. We're going to be really diving into it here soon and hoping to get that done by our deadline. I think it's in December. But with that being said, uh, well, you're going to need to, this person. So what I passed out to you guys is just a brief summary in efforts to save the trees. I only printed out four pages opposed to 25 or so pages of the actual report. So we're going to send that to you all via emails. That way it could be environmental service and you guys can read it in real time. But like I said, it's a really cool report. I think that you guys will get a lot out of it. There's some really cool strategies in here. Main Street is taking a forward builder approach. If you look at that top page, it kind of spells it out here. It's economic, value, design, organization, innovation. And basically everything stems from that in terms of the work plan and how we go about accomplishing our goals as an entity. Another thing I wanted to highlight, which is in that packet I passed out, you go to your last page. So recently, I'm sure a lot of yous know it, there was a community survey that went out digitally asking, engaging the community on what they liked about the community, what they didn't, what they like to see changed. So that last page is just visual to you guys to look at and see. The top one is just what, where comes to mind when you think about downtown Brookville? And then the bottom one is what's one word that comes to mind you dislike about Brookville? Which you guys probably don't need to look at the tree, but it's good to get the actual data. We can share that with you as well in more in-depth. Like I said, we will be sending out more reports to you probably right after this. And then if you would like more in-depth detail and if you're going to explain it, you will be most wise to explain it deeper in detail for you. So yeah, I just want to end this quick. The last thing I wanted to put on your guys' radar is obviously you are the town of Brookville. We are Main Street Brookville. So we want to keep you guys informed. We want to make sure you know what we're doing and how things are going and what our goals are. We have this work plan. I'm sure you guys have a work plan. You're probably working on two towards 2023. I know you've got a budget that you're looking at at least. And I don't think you would, we would like to invite you to help us with our work plan. We greatly got your guys' input. We greatly got your guys' wisdom. And we think it's important. We're Main Street Brookville. You guys are the talent of Brookville, accounting. And your inputs are in such a way, if there's any shared goals that we have as organizations, we can potentially tackle them together and save our resources. Maybe take a little bit of time on Jess's docket. We would love to help with that. But if there's anything, you know, that we share as goals, I think it would be efficient and good to tackle it together. So we'd like to invite you to help elaborate on that. I don't know the exact details of when it would, when that would be, but I'm sure we'd be ready to find out on the board if we can stay in touch. So other than that, um, oh, by the way, the survey, we want to give a shout out to Michael Beck for tourism. She did a great job of doing this and that and getting that written out to everybody. So but other than that, that's all I have here. So if you have any questions? All right.
Thanks.
Cool. All right. You guys have a good night.
Thanks, Gage.
Thanks, Gage. So was that a combination of three and four?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Hidden Valley Sewer Main Bit Opening, one?
Yeah, I mistakenly left it off the agenda last meeting. So it was supposed to be open last meeting. However, I just told the sold better that it wouldn't be opened and advised them that it would be tonight. Like Tim advertised this. And the sealed bids were due by noon on the, I think that was the sixth, or 4:00 PM on the sixth. And we did only receive the one.
The bid is from Brackney's. The bid is for $97,200. Typically, we take under advisement from the attorney and in this case, Tim, to review and bring back forward. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to have Grant and Tim, you were the advisors.
Kathy made a motion to take under advisement. Is there a second? Surely a second. It's all in favor? Oppose motion here. 2023 Budget Public Hearing. I had, is this the actual hearing?
That's the advertise Form 3 that shows. So if, I don't know if you just want me to go down by the line and you can see, you can see on the Form 3, the fund names on the left-hand side and then the budget estimates. And then the only maximated estimated funds that are included on the Form 3 are the property tax rate funds. So those will be general debt service, MVH, and cum cap development. So cum cap development, we decided to budget higher for next year if the fire ladder truck is in fact going to be an option for purchase. So that proposed tax rate doesn't change. The cum cap development rate will always remain what it is currently. I think it's 0.457. So that will be, that's not affected by the other portions of the tax rate. I'm sorry, 0.0457. And then Casino Riverboat, we budgeted 15,000 out of that. That's not connected with the tax rate. Rainy Day, 30,000, also not connected with the tax rate. General, we budgeted 2,000, or $2,096,561. Our maximum estimated funds for the levy is $859,348. The levy percentage of that is 5.31%. When, when they do the proposed rates, they use 85% of 2022 estimated assessed values. So that rate won't be finalized until they use the new values. Debt service, we budgeted 132,000 for the payments. Public safety, 81,000. Local road and street, 26,000. Motor vehicle highway, MVH, 246,750. 50,000 of that property tax revenue will be towards MVH. Cum cap improvement fund, $10,000. That's not connected with the tax rate. Edit Fund, that's the economic development income tax fund. We budgeted 200,000 out of that fund. Again, that's lit revenue, not connected with the property tax rate. The rest of the funds here are grant funds. So I have the local road and bridge matching grant fund. That is what we budget for our community crossings matching grant. So we did apply for one. We don't know if we got it yet, but I went ahead and proposed the budget amount anyway, in case we do. That's just mainly a reporting fund to DLGF. DARP, Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. I went ahead and budgeted what we have received in those local fiscal funds, recovery funds so far. And that was the 700, 573,140. And then we have not yet completed the firefighters' grant. So we, I went ahead and budgeted 50,000 for the remainder of that, the grant. And I believe I sent everybody the Form 1s with the budget amounts for each line item.
What's this?
The first one's a clean copy. The second one is the one where I circled the changes.
Okay.
So when we had originally met for a budget hearing, I put as much as I possibly could in there that you guys had discussed. After meeting with Kathy, our DLGF rep, I did make some changes for the general line items in the general fund and MVH, which I thought were closer than the numbers we should be.
Any questions, Gina?
Do the public hearing?
Right. So is there, let's go ahead and open the, the hearing, the public hearing for the 2023 Budget Public Hearing. It's a time for the public to address the board regarding the 2023 budget, or the budget.
I just wanted to ask, if you approve this budget, does that mean that you're going to buy ladder trucks?
No. So just because you budget something doesn't mean you have to spend it. But we're spending with the, we're budgeting with the idea that it's a possibility that we could spend it. Basically, this just would save me from doing additional appropriation next year.
So that means you'd have the money?
Yes.
Without?
Have the money for the down payment. I'm sorry, for what was presented that day.
It was a lease option.
Yeah, it was a lease option to purchase. So we would do the, the down payment for that, for next year.
One of the things at that meeting was, it was supposed to be contingent on the county, was that?
Right.
We have anything?
And I haven't heard anything about that.
It's still a thing.
So that's still just out there?
Right. So just because we budget, it doesn't mean, because we also budget funds from Rainy Day and Riverboat for general, maybe sometimes emergency purposes, and sometimes we don't spend those funds. So just because it's there doesn't mean it's going to be spent unless there's a specific purpose.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Motion to close the public hearing on the budget.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, it's working. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Brooke made a motion to close. Is there a second? All in favor? Close motion here. Gina, do you need anything else regarding this?
No. If you wanted to make any other changes, I couldn't increase it by any means from what I've advertised here. But if there's other deductions that you see on that Form 1 that you would like to put in there, that would have to be, I would have to put that in there prior to the next meeting before adoption. But it cannot be increased. It could only be decreased.
The water rate, the utility rates, tax repeal, Gina?
So last year, we, 2021, we increased our water rates. It was supposed to be, well, it was actually 5% for 2021. And then it was supposed to be a 3% increase for 2022. However, I knew the utility receipts tax repeal was coming down and I didn't want to change the rates twice. So I held off on doing the 3% increase for 2022 because that utility tax repeal was a 1.4% decrease. So I talked to Scott Hadler with Baker Tilly. He said essentially, if we wanted to stay on track with this, we could do the 1.6% increase for the rest of 2022 and then stay on track for the 3% increase in 2023. I don't know what your thoughts are on that. I personally think we're so close to the end of the year. I just gave notice that we're not increasing and the utility re-tax receipt, 1.4%, is basically done. And then we carry on with the 3% for 2023 and then do the 3% possibly in 2024 then. Because I, we're going to have to amend this ordinance, unless you wanted to do a study at the end of 2023.
I don't think we need to do the study. The study took forever last time and resulted in us being very low compared to other communities to the point where it left the, um, both funds needing additional money should have a big problem arise, which we've had several. So, so explain the options, Anne. The option one would be to do the 1.6%, 1.4%?
For the rest of 2022.
And then do the 3% in 2023 as we were?
Right.
Or not do, and then do a larger one in 2023?
That would be up to your discretion if you would like. Right now, it's currently 7, 3%. So if we wanted to, I don't know if we could do a larger increase. I'm not sure beyond that 3%. I mean, we're going to have to amend this ordinance regardless. So I guess if you guys want to think about it.
The other option she was saying was to amend, or push the 3% back for 2023 and then possibly do another 3% in 2024. So instead of doing 2023, So instead of doing 2022 and 2023, do 2023 and 2024.
So essentially, no increase for 2022, basically. Because it would only be 1.6% in the big scheme of things, I'm not sure it's really worth.
Raise it to 1.6%?
Yeah.
For two months?
For two months, and then, yeah. And sometimes when you do those increases, then...
So if we waited to do it in 2023, you would have a catch-up during 2024 of the 3%.
Correct.
I would think since we're three months away from the end of the year, that's probably the best option. And to give a little bit of buffer between the, we talked about a four-year ramp up when we initially did this at a little bit lower, so between the 5% and 0% for 2021 and 2022, I think that's a better option. I don't want to do another study because the study's going to get all higher based off of...
I know there are some communities too that just do an annual increase, so I'm not sure if that's something you guys want to look into, or if we just want to address this again at the end of whatever you all decide.
The problem is that the, I mean, when we did the study, most of the, most of the costs for repairs were drastically lower, and if we did the study now, they're going to be suggesting a higher rate because this rate wasn't even close to what the study had suggested. We scaled it back.
And this was pre-COVID, if I remember. And prior to that, I don't think that, the last ordinance was done in 2015, so that was six years ago.
No. It was, it took a year and a half for the last study done. I mean, it was supposed to be delivered around the time COVID hit, but I'd be in favor of not doing an increase this year, and then amending the salary ordinance for 2023 and 2024 to reflect the intended 3% increase. And I think we could discuss whether or not we want to do an annual increase after that.
Sure.
I think so too. I really don't think you want to make a change for a couple of months, that's crazy. So, yeah.
Well, I just, when I did the number, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense for the work we're going to have to do for it, so. And I still need to notify everyone about the utility tax receipt repeal, so if we could do this all at once, it makes more sense to me that way.
Right. Is there a motion regarding the discussion?
So essentially, 0 increase for 2022, 3% in 2023, and 3% in 2024.
Do you have to do like a...
I'll have to do an amendment? We'll have to do an amendment? I don't...
Yeah, I guess I would do an amendment to this 2021-1.
Since it's future late, we'll have to have two, it'll have to go through two meetings, correct?
Right.
Advertise it, discuss it, and then have a hearing on it.
I think even a public hearing too, yeah.
So you're just looking for a motion to advertise with one of your options?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion for Gina to advertise for no increase for 2022, a 3% increase for 2023, and a 3% increase for 2024.
Brooks made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy, second, all in favor? Close motion, carry.
Sorry.
Makes sense. So kind of in line with utility taxes, I'm going to pause on number 8 real quick, since we're talking utilities. John Palmer and Bill Shermer, the conversations regarding the sewer extension, said that we need to research our current tap-in fees and for both the water and the sewer. I can't recall, since I've been on board, that we've ever adjusted that, and it's always been the same fee. And based off their research with other communities, it is extremely low. So they wanted the town to begin initiating that conversation before they get much further into the sewer extension. Jess, would you be able to work with Tim in looking at other communities' sewer and water tap fees?
Sure.
And then bring back for discussion at a future date?
Yep, I can.
Okay.
What are the current fees?
Around 500 bucks, tap-in.
Plus cost of material.
From what they're finding, it's minimum 1,500 to 2,500 on other communities, so. Tom, are you here tonight, round number eight, for the letter to the community school corporation?
Yeah, that's what I'm here for.
Okay, okay. So Gina has drafted a letter for the town to consider in regards to vacating the current town hall. So I'll read the letter, and this would be addressed to the Frank County Community School Corporation Board of Trustees. Dear Board of Trustees, the town of Brookfield is interested in vacating the current town hall if the right opportunity arises. The town will need to find suitable meeting space and make plans for short-term and long-term locations for its offices. The town has been approached by the county commissioners and is interested in discussing the options the county has discussed. Therefore, the town would like to conditionally enter into a three-party discussion with the Frank County Community School Corporation and Frank County Commissioners. Right, insert commissioners. I'm going to insert commissioners to discuss possible plans for vacation. We believe that a positive outcome for all three entities and the citizens of Frank County is possible if we work together to determine a feasible plan. Sincerely, Francis Ward, Town Council President.
So the, this school board, the commissioners went and spoke to the school board at the school board's last meeting, and the school board wanted more of a confirmation that the town was interested, so it was coming from the town and not just coming through the commissioners from the town.
Makes sense.
That was discussed at the last meeting. At the meeting this morning, the commissioners proposed a tentative offer to start discussions on that front, and they've been engaging a, they're in the process of engaging a consultant to work on the dispatch, a dispatch plan for that building. At the moment, I'm obviously in the middle of this, and I'm trying to act as an information conduit to everybody. I don't know at this point if you need other counsel. If you think you do, I could certainly find somebody. I've already talked to somebody to back up the county. What would have to happen on the county's perspective is they have to, the county and the school would have to adopt basically an identical or similar resolution, agreeing to whatever terms those are, and then you folks will have to figure out where you come in, in the middle layer. You don't really have quite the same interest because really, your action, most of it is just leaving. So it's not, it's not, it's not as hard to draft some of the things you need, but if you need something for part of it, I can certainly find you counsel on that.
We need manpower.
Tom, you can get the highway department and all other stuff over there.
How quickly would space be available if we needed it?
Oh, at the government center, a day.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, could we get use of the meeting space? I mean, I think that would help us.
Yeah, anytime.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we would have no conflicts with our first and third Tuesdays of the month at 7:00?
I don't, I think I would be there, so I don't think you do. Because I think you moved it to Lloyd Peaking, so I think you're fine.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if anybody has met up there.
No.
I don't, I can't think of, zoning doesn't need, so I think, yeah, I think probably these are okay. We can confirm that space. Any questions regarding the letter? Any corrections other than insert commissioners as read?
I didn't catch any.
Is there a motion to approve signing and sending to the school board trustees?
I have a motion to approve the letter to the, to the school board.
Kathy made a motion, sorry. To approve signing and sending, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor? Pose. Gina, would you be able to make that correction, and I'll stop in tomorrow's time?
Yep, sure.
Tom, anything else for us?
Nothing.
Easy enough, thank you. So Sean Burns with the Refill Volunteer Fire Department contacted me. Jess, I don't know if he contacted you or Gina regarding a donation for their reverse raffle.
He did, and I just printed off his, I asked him to put something in writing since it was after I posted the agenda, so I printed off.
Did I, do I have it? Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Maybe, okay.
I didn't see it, I just caught off my notes. So their reverse raffle is held every year on October 1st. They are requesting a donated golf membership for the 2023 season. It doesn't say this, but this is something that Brookfield's done since they've been handling the reverse raffle. So Mike Craig Royce or myself know if you have any questions. Any questions or discussion?
It's a nice, it's a nice donation from the fire department. And I think we can maybe set precedents earlier in the year with the rule by allowing, you know, the pass for the watchtower. So, I see, people out who did this?
I think so too. They, I mean, they fundraised a lot of money that time, and it all reflects what we have to budget for them, so I think that we'd be donating it to them, but we'd also have to pay for that, so if they don't raise the money, so. Do you want to put that into the form of motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to donate an annual membership to golf course to the reverse raffle fire department.
Kathy made a motion to donate a membership, is there a second? Shirley, second, all in favor? Close motion, carry. Halloween 2022, in keeping with tradition, we typically approve this last meeting in September. The historic dates has always been all in Halloween. We bring it forward to the board to see if that's changed.
No, I like Halloween to be on October 31st, so I think we need to keep it the same.
Any discussion?
I'm very good.
Do you want to make that? Okay, Kathy made a motion, here we go. Keep it on Halloween, all in favor? Close motion, carry.
Six to eight.
Jess, you wanted to give a frisbee golf update?
So, yeah, sorry. Over this past weekend, the holes were dug. I think Thursday, they're going to start installing the posts. I tried to YouTube the installation of frisbee golf, just so I understand what he means, but there's something that goes in, and then the basket attaches to that. So the posts, I think some of them are going to be installed on Thursday, so then he'll have to come put the baskets together after that, but the holes are dug, and he'll be there Thursday installing some posts.
I got a complaint from the adjoining landowner, Wayne Halcom, and he said it is very close to his property line, and he thinks it possibly should be moved because we get frisbees in this yard all the time, so.
Can you have Brent look at that?
He'd already talked to Brent, but yeah, I think maybe something needs to be, be done. But I know Brent knows, knows of this situation.
Brent, is it on, is it on his property or on town's property?
It's on town property, which is right on property line.
Like literally on the line?
Yeah. I'm not going to tell you what Wayne said, but yeah, it's very close.
Can you get Adam and Brent and look at options on that particular hole?
Yep.
Good question.
Sure.
So the last time you guys talked about it, you said that the frisbee golf was going to be temporary, and there wouldn't be any permanent structure, did something change?
That's what she means. She means it can be taken out, it can be taken out.
This, it's basically a PVC pipe, and then the baskets sit in that, and there's a pin, so they can be taken out and moved. They're, they're not permanently in the ground, they're, it's like a flagpole, you can take the flag in and out with a pin.
That's a good example, yeah.
So no concrete?
There's concrete there to hold the...
The post.
The PVC.
And like...
They mow for those?
Yeah.
Well, then how is this temporary? Because I think the first way that you explained it, that it was going to be concrete, and then you had complaints, and then you said, okay, we're just going to make it a temporary, we won't...
We looked at doing concrete pads for the throwing spot. They're temporary mats.
Yes, they're horse pads, to be exact. Is that what you mean?
It'll be in the hole, the concrete will be in the hole, not above the ground.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's under, sorry, it's under, to hold the post. It's, yeah, and to hold a post. I had to YouTube it, I don't know.
Initially, initially, they were going to do landing pads and things like that, but that's just, it's movable half-inch horse pads.
Yes, I have a picture of, I mean, I can tell you exactly what the measurements are.
It's horse pads, stall pads.
Tractor Supply is where I would get them.
Gina, you had a request from Mike Straight regarding police hiring.
Yeah, so he had asked me if counsel would be able to consider his request to replace, I think it was Stat and Williams.
So on advice of counsel, not Grant Reeves, but Tony, he is recommending to delay decisions on police hiring until future date, so you can let Officer Straight know. I think that's it for me. Brooke?
Just an update that Tobbles Timber installed their mural on Sunday. So it is right over here on the back of the restrooms overlooking the basketball courts.
It's beautiful.
It's so pretty. I was so excited when I saw it.
It's really pretty.
Right now, it's really vibrant, over time, it will fade, but because of the different color variations, you will still be able to see the pattern and all of that with it, so.
It's pretty.
Yeah.
Should we go ahead and get the final paperwork?
Yeah, I need to get with you to fill out the final paperwork so that we can pay him the rest of the money. But then that should be the close of that project.
Kathy?
I'm listening.
Sharon? Brent? Jess?
I do. I have two members of the Historic Preservation Commission that have been thus far unable to fulfill their obligations, so I'm looking for guidance on what to do with those two members. There's camp that's next, is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
27.
Yeah, next week. One of the two is unable to attend, and that's a requirement, so. And then just haven't been able to come to any of the meetings either, so I just think it'd be best to replace those two members, but I'm just kind of looking for guidance.
How do they do that, Jess? Would the new members have to attend a different camp meeting?
Honestly, I, I don't know.
What's protocol on removing the appointed person before the term? There's protocol.
It depends on the board, I have to look at the board. Some of them had to do with cause, some of them, if they missed so many meetings, it varied by board. So I have to look at the protocol on it.
Jess, maybe try to get guidance from Jerry Holbrook?
Okay.
And then maybe send an email or written communication?
We did.
To the two members?
Yes, that's already been done.
Asking them to resign, or?
Yes, letting them know that it's a requirement of them, that they haven't been to any of the things that they need to be at, but I haven't had a response from either of them.
Can you maybe resend, resend it again at the urging of the board to reconsider their commitment to serving on that appointment? And in the meantime, if Grant can look at the process of removing, if they are still
I can, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, certainly. If they don't wish to be involved anymore, if they could formally resign, that would make life easier.
Written, has to be written, not verbal.
Anything else, Jess? Gina?
No, thanks.
I did have two more things. So the senior class contacted us, and in the past, they have used the Zimmer Building, the current town building, to build their senior class float. They're requesting use of that again this year. They used the, what is now the street department in the past because it was mostly vacant. The storefront is not currently being used. Can we allow them to use that, Grant?
Is that area not in construction?
The garage, the garage space is out of the scope.
I mean, that would be the main thing, is to make sure the construction area is secure.
The salt in one of the buildings, correct? They moved that?
Yes.
So the, the main, the main garage is... So the, the main, the main garage is completely empty.
Vacant and not under construction.
They would be looking at starting next week through homecoming.
I did my senior float down there.
Did you?
I don't have a problem with that, I just hope nobody gets hurt, it's a construction area, so they kind of...
It wouldn't be, I, they wouldn't have access to the construction area, so it's essentially a big garage, a big empty garage.
Just have somebody go through and make sure it's secure and locked and everything before anybody's in there.
Sure. What is the date on that?
And that part would still have bathrooms available to them if they wanted to?
Yes.
If they needed it?
Yes.
Because it does have bathrooms there?
Yep.
Sometime next week?
Okay.
I gave them your name and number to contact you, should the board approve it, so I would expect a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Here's the bathroom, they wouldn't have to move the construction.
There's another bathroom in the garage.
In the back part?
Where, there's no construction in that back part.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Shouldn't you guys be asking the municipal building board this question, since they own the building, the town doesn't?
We can, but...
Who do I need to ask? It'll be Darryl, I guess. He's the...
Darryl Brown.
Yeah, president.
Darryl's president, Mike is vice president, and I'm secretary.
Yeah.
Do we need to, Brent?
Convey it, just convey it to Darryl and make sure he's okay with it.
So is there a motion to approve use of that, assuming Darryl approves?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy made that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Shirley seconds, all in favor? Close motion carried. The job description for the police chief has been advertised, correct?
Yes.
We need, the board, we don't take action tonight, the board does need to consider the hiring process for a new chief, and if we're wanting to form, it's been suggested that an outside committee serve as the initial kind of selection and advisory committee, and that be made up of people that's in law enforcement or have a background either in like prosecution, et cetera. So, say, by the next meeting, because applications are due at the end of this month, consider who we would want to serve on that, how many, et cetera. Make a motion.
Yeah, I spoke to the sheriff's department, got a little bit of an idea of how they run their process, and they, they have various stakeholders involved in that process, a little different because the sheriff's elected, obviously, so there are some ordinance. But they, they've got background checks that they're around on people, and they gave me a copy of the background check material, so I was going to look over those and see if they make sense for this process. A lot of times in that process, you'll start out, you will, you can set up the board as far as whatever you want the board to be on that, then the, as far as interviewing, you can narrow the process down in an executive session, and get it down to some final candidates. At that point, that's probably when you would want to do the background checking, because you can save some expense and headache, you know, they don't want a background check, literally everybody applies, and then may find a termination from there.
Can we double-check with the public access council? Now, we had a committee before that did work, it was appointed by the council, and they suggested that we not approve formally at the meeting, or by the council, so can we make sure that we're with that?
Yeah, I'll look through the, the process on that, and, yeah, it's probably about five years ago, they got into a fracas over when a committee constituted a public body and things like that, but in this case, it is one where there is a lawful executive session regardless, so even if it's treated as a committee, you could always pull it as an executive session and cover it from there anyway. We, I'll make, wait, sure, follow the steps correctly, and the last, I need to double-check on the last, when you narrow the last candidates down, if that's a public or if that's an executive session as well.
Okay. Any questions for Grant regarding that? Anything else for the board? Public comment regarding the agenda items? No public comment, motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Kathy made a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carried.